Okay, welcome. Thank you all so much for coming. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have the roll call plates. Shoemaker.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Here.
Polin.
Here.
Von.
Here.
Hofstadter.
Here.
Khan.
Here.
Can we have a motion to excuse Matt? He is at the trick-or-treat light show out at the high school helping with security there.
So moved.
Second.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Polin. Von.
Aye.
And Khan.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll start with the community calendar. We changed clocks this weekend, so it's back to doom and gloom. November 10th, we talked about that last week, the first annual Holmes County Marine Corps Ball is at 5:00 PM. Reserve tickets are $35 each, and you can get those from the Legion. November 16th, the Victorian House opens for Christmas. Our Mary Millersburg Chocolate Walk is coming up on the 23rd, and then I have some things farther out. Friends of Skyview Benefit Dinner is at 5:00 PM out at Skyview Ranch. And the dinner with the president's fundraiser at the Berlin Grand for the Victorian House. It's gonna cost, they said, a little over $75,000 to paint the Victorian House. And so they're starting to do some fundraisers to make money for that because of all the little intricacies that need to be painted. So this is their first big fundraiser. Tickets are $40 each or $75 per couple. And there's going to be some presidential actors out there as well as first ladies. So that should be a fun time, and that includes dinner, obviously. Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
Do you want to add the American Legion Parade and?
We will add that. December the 15th?
Right, yeah.
And what time is that parade, Bob?
2:00.
December 15th at 2:00 PM. Legion Parade and Santa, right?
Thank you.
Santa, okay. I will add that on there. Thank you so much. I gave you guys the options for the coloring pages. Are there any that you prefer? So again, these will be for the Millersburg Elementary Coloring Contest. We're gonna do a first, second, and third from each grade, and then those winners we're gonna make into banners for the downtown to hang up. Which one do you like?
You know, there's not, there's not one in here that has a lot of color.
Well, they're going to be made into, yeah, they're gonna be blown up whole page and then made, and then just, they'll just have the major lines and then the kids can draw them. So I know they seem a little intricate right now, but they won't be when they become a coloring page.
Patients are painting the Historical Society one, why not?
The Victorian House?
The Victorian House.
Do you like that? Devon, you like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Bob? Yeah?
I'd go with the courthouse. He goes in for me.
Which do you like?
I'm a courthouse guy, but I will go with the majority.
Okay, we had three. What, what did you think?
Either the courthouse or the Victorian House. I'll go with either one.
Oh, alright.
Victorian House, there we go.
Victorian House, okay, Victorian House it is.
Trying to speed this along.
Okay. Thanks for that, Brett. Alright, Victorian House it is.
Air breaks a tone.
That's true, that's true.
Courthouse is just a lot of brown.
It is, it is, it is. Yeah, the Victorian House, that'll be good. Okay, perfect. Alright, moving along. That's all that I have so far on what's going on with our end of the bicentennial. Our meeting was rescheduled, so I will let you know when that is. Are there any visitors wish to address council? No? Alright. Can I have a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes, please?
Second.
Polin.
Aye.
Von.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
And Khan.
Aye.
Any additions or corrections?
There's a couple of Brett Hofstadters in there.
Who did those?
Who's Brett Hofstadter?
How did I fix, how did I fix those?
Sorry, Brett.
Just in the bicentennial section at the beginning.
Oh.
That's all.
I was in a hurry. I'll fix it, I'll fix it, I promise.
Thank you.
Any other additions or corrections? Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Polin.
Aye.
Von.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
And Khan.
Aye.
Alright, bill resolution 2024-21. Are there any questions on the bills totaling $164,242.35? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to pay?
I'll make a motion to pay. Khan.
Second.
Khan.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Polin.
Alright.
And Von.
Aye.
Okay, Nate.
Alright, Design Review Board will meet next week, the 6th, to review a certificate of appropriateness for the tattoo studio next door here for their signage, and then planning and zoning will meet at 6:30 that evening. Got a variance application for a structure that Brody, Brody D has putting out in 736 Diamond Alley. Replaced the mobile home that used to be there. It got demolished in the, the windstorm a couple of years ago.
One Oak Street?
Yeah. Yep. No update on the Jones Street Worcester Road intersection. Still waiting on Bright Speed to get their work done. Nothing on our building. Ledges Drive is pretty much all done. I think we're gonna do a little bit of additional concrete replacement at the driveway of 120 Ledges Drive. It didn't, didn't turn out the best after everything was said and done. It's, it's got some pretty significant cracks, so I want to get part of that replaced. But that'll wrap everything up. The spray foam solutions leveled quite a bit of curb in, in the drive itself, and it really did a nice job. They, they were able to save a lot of concrete, but there's just a little bit of the apron that we need to replace. We'll get that done and get the bill sent out and hopefully move on. The solicitor RFP that we talked about at the last meeting has been advertised, posted on our website and Facebook page. Anybody that's interested can reach out and send a copy of that. The landscape RFP, I finalized it today. I have not sent it out yet. Tomorrow morning I'll send that out to all the area landscaping companies. I'll post it on Facebook as well. If anybody's interested, they can reach out. If I don't send it to them, if I mess them, they can.
What kind of flowers would you select? Brett, come on.
I've got nothing. I'm with you. I'm with you.
I'm telling you, I'm not a flower guy. I can't even remember what they're called.
I like looking at them, but I don't know what they are.
Give me one second, I can tell you. Maybe? There we go. They are Petunia and Verbena, Verbena?
Verbena.
Verbena. So there you go.
Good, good job.
You would've guessed that, wouldn't you?
Yeah, that's exactly.
I also put in, add some low greenery.
That's a good touch.
Or something as well.
Good job.
We'll see what we get. But lead pickup began this week, today, actually, the first, first round of the first quadrant. There's, there's a few places I just wanted to mention as a reminder to everybody. Don't blow your leaves out into the street, take up parking spaces, or block the intersections or anything. Keep it in the, in the tree lawn. We'll be, we can get them from there. Don't, don't push them out into the street where they can cause parking problems or safety issues and plug storm sewers, that kind of thing. The full schedule is the same schedule as every other year, but it's available on our website, or on, I'm sorry, on Facebook. If anybody needs it, I can call in and we can let them know. I think that's all I had.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. The chief wanted everyone to know. He had two officers finish CIT training, Dustin Batitzer and Hunter Derrick. He has four left to do, two officers and two dispatchers. So that's what he had. Bobby?
Alright, I have just been diligently working on appropriation, so I'll have a draft of that for next meeting. And I think in other news from Bobby's office is, I recently set out, sent out our non-filer letters, basically for income tax, anybody who didn't, individuals or non-companies that didn't, didn't file, that we didn't receive a tax return, for sent out letters. There were quite a few, like a lot. So that has me thinking that we are probably missing some revenue when it comes to our income tax revenue. And I wondered if I could throw out and just get some opinions from you guys of what you think about RITA, the Regional Income Tax Authority. I know, I know. It is not something that I am thrilled to talk about either. But the whole point of municipal income tax and that ordinance that was passed in 2016, I think it was, is for revenue, and we are missing a lot. There were 708 non-filer letters, and that's just for individuals or, or non-company type. And we don't send those out to businesses, which seems crazy to me. So there's a lot of lost revenue there. I can couple that with, I, I, it's just busy. I, I, the phone rang off the hook today because of the non-filer letters. A lot of it is just, I'm gonna blame it, a lot of it on how our tax program is. It's kind of out of date. And I can show you guys specifics. I don't want to bore you with it, but if you're ever interested in kind of these things, like, you know, I can definitely show you more. I can show you where our revenue is for so far this year and what I learned at the tax conference earlier this year as far as where it could be. So I at least wanted to broach that topic with you. I know it's not one that most of us are in favor of, but wanted to see what you guys thought, what your concerns are, and if I should even look into it. So.
I'll offer my opinion.
Please do.
We should hire somebody in-house to help you. Because I've had past experience, RITA.
Yeah.
I, for myself, it wasn't, I didn't have that many problems, but other people I worked with did.
Did, okay.
Yeah.
What kind of, what kind of problems?
They were actually charged for income taxes in other various communities.
Okay.
As part of it.
Okay.
Or, yeah, that was probably the biggest thing.
Okay.
I don't live there, I don't work there.
Right.
How are you doing this to me, you know?
Right.
Things like that.
Okay. Was there a resolution? Like, how was the, I mean, do you, I know you might not know, because it wasn't you specifically.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I just know they were mad.
Yeah, yeah. I think when, I think when it comes to, I think when it comes to income tax, that's everybody's first.
Bobby, do you have a, any kind of a feeling for how many of those 700 are actually valid?
I don't, not yet. I know of the calls I got today, which was a lot of calls. I'm gonna say probably half were valid. Oh, I forgot. And a bunch of people stopped in, brought more tax returns, and they'd just forgotten.
Okay.
And there's a whole bunch of other ones. I'll give you one example. Is a fella called, that's lived in town for about a year and a half. Number one, I had no idea he lived in town. I had not gotten any data matches on him. I had no idea. So right there is two tax years of, of revenue that, that was missed. The reason he called is because he lives in a rental, and these letters went out, and he received four letters, which he didn't open, to four past tenants that haven't lived there for at least a year and a half. So where did they go? Did they go someplace else in town? Did they move out of town? Who knows? I have no way of knowing. But the only thing that we can use right now for data match is voter registration, and that's not super reliable. So, not only because not everybody registers to vote, but because when people move, they, they don't update their voter registration either. So, and this is a, you know, this is an election year, so a general election. So if people were gonna update the voting records, I would think that this would be the year they'd do it. So there's a lot, there's, right now, if I had to gauge from today, which everybody just got their letter over the weekend, if I just had to gauge from today, I'm gonna say it's split right down the middle. There's various reasons.
I guess the, the silver lining to this all is that apparently mail from the village is now being delivered.
Is, yes, yes.
Way quicker with taxes, way quicker.
Way quicker. So these went out in, in regular, you know, envelopes and, and, yeah, so they did get there, which is great.
If we went to an outside source like RITA, again, if we have somebody in-house, that's money that stays in the community and sitting on up to Cleveland.
Right, right. So at the tax conference that I attended earlier this year, there was, of course, a lot of talk about RITA. Most, I'd like to see a statistic to see which municipalities and cities, villages, cities, you know, what that percentage is in, in Ohio that have, that use RITA and don't. I did a quick look the other day. I ended up on a website, I believe it was a county department taxation website, had every municipality listed in Ohio, and you could click on them to get their income tax information. And almost all of them that I clicked on, it went to the RITA page. Very few actually had their in-house, you know, their taxes. If, if that were the case, it would direct you to their, their website, that village or city's website. So there was a, definitely a, a much higher number of folks using RITA than not. But that doesn't necessarily mean that RITA's the best way to go, and I realize that. But at the tax conference that I was at, there was, of course, a lot of talk about RITA. And they can, I believe that these municipalities, I think they were small cities, that talked most about it, that presented. And they weren't endorsing RITA, they weren't like pushing it hard, but they were, they talked about, they still have an income tax administrator in the village that still has tasks to take care of. It doesn't completely eliminate that position, but does it lighten the load and does it increase revenue? I think it does. The evidence that I'm seeing says it does. So.
So Kilbuck uses it.
Yes.
And those forms are difficult.
Okay.
That, if you, if you, if you see the, it's very difficult.
Okay.
And my question is, is RITA better at finding the people that, oh, how, what, what, what system do they use?
That's a really good question. I have not, I, I'm busy. I have not had time to see it.
So we don't know how they read.
And read everything there is to read, so I don't know what their, what their methods are.
Too. It's nauseating. So the people end up not doing it because it's so hard to fill out.
Right, right. So, but I, I do know that, what was I gonna say? So the, the, the folks at the, at the income tax seminar that I went to said that RITA has a lot of, of resources available to them for locating people and locating, you know, folks that are in and out of their, of their municipalities. They have a better grasp on that, and they, I don't know what their methods are. I'll read about that. But, but yes, I believe the answer is, is yes to that. So.
Any other questions?
I saw Tom Von's head shaking no over there, so I'm interested in hearing your opinion.
I, I travel the state. I know a lot of places, and there's a lot of places that complain about RITA, and, and for some reason, it gets pretty excitable that the police department's been involved in, you know, confrontations about RITA and Matt, the villages. I've, I've had five or six agencies talk about that, that it's just not been, been good.
Not been a positive, yeah.
They also don't waste time suing people.
No, oh, okay, okay.
So that's the reason I know about it, is because of, they, they sue, they'll sue you.
That is one of the reviews that I read, that say that they're pretty quick to pull the trigger.
Yeah. So it will, so then you're gonna have, as a village, you're gonna come across, it's not easy to, you can't work with the, then RITA's involved.
Yeah, yeah. It's true.
Anyone else?
I, I really don't have anything to add to, you know.
So I'm, I'm going to do some research. I'm gonna look for answers, and I'm definitely interested in hearing more from you guys. You can stop in anytime, and I'll tell you about, I don't want to go into too much detail about some of the challenges that I'm seeing, just because I don't, income taxes are a very touchy matter, and I don't want the public thinking that, you know, the main goal is just to collect on those taxes and, and, you know, squeeze every dime out of them that we can. But I do know that the, I feel like the main goal of, of having a municipal income tax for that revenue, and we are missing out on a considerable amount of revenue. I think the revenue that we would see increased would offset the cost of RITA, is what I think. So.
Tell me this, Bob, do you know who Worcester, how they handle their income tax?
I know a lot of, I, I clicked on some of the smaller villages around here. Like, I clicked on Kilbuck, Holmesville, just went to RITA, I believe, earlier in 2024. What's that?
Glenma, I think.
Glenma, Nashville, Kilbuck. So lots, and then I can't, I clicked on Worcester, but I, for the life of me, cannot remember if it took me to RITA or if it took me to.
It's probably administered by themselves, I would think. That's my guess.
It's a city.
Yeah.
My husband works in Orville, and they do RITA. They, they changed over, I think, three years ago.
Okay, well, if you don't mind, when I have time, I'm probably gonna look at this and try to, try to gather some more information, and, and I'll come back to you guys with that. If that's okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Can I just add real quick, I forgot to mention, when you said tax program, you reminded me of our discussion about the utility program. We're meeting with our rep Wednesday at 2:30 to talk about some of those options and questions that we had in the proposal. So, are you wearing that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on my calendar.
What, are you about to surprise look or not?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
I don't have any.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, I don't, we have an upcoming committee meeting. We have, the Business and Housing Committee is meeting November 13th. That's the only upcoming committee that I know of. When, is, is Tree City done for the year? Okay, so spring? Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, so we'll just move right along. Are there any reports of committees? Alright, start with legislation. We have the third reading by title only, Ordinance 2024-109, and ordinance amending the zoning map zone territory of the Village of Millersburg. Are there any questions? Have a motion to pass?
Second.
Polin.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Von.
Aye.
And Khan.
Aye.
Alright, second reading by title only, Resolution 2024-20, a resolution to adopt an indigent burial policy for Oak Hill Cemetery. Are there any questions? Second reading by title only, Ordinance 2024-110, and ordinance revising Chapter 1143.02 of the village ordinances. Are there any questions? Lots of questions today. Second reading, title only, Ordinance 2024-111, and ordinance amending the Village of Millersburg's schedule of fees. Any questions? Second reading by title only, Ordinance 2024-112, and ordinance establishing 1153.05 of the village ordinances. Are there any questions? Second reading by title only, Ordinance 2024-113, and ordinance establishing 1160.05, 1161.05, and 1162.05, and 1164.05 of the village ordinances. Any questions? Alright, and last but not least, second reading by title only, Ordinance 2024-114, and ordinance revising Chapter 1,173 of the village ordinances. Are there any questions? Alright, any old business? I'll start out by thanking our police officers for helping to keep our kids safe for trick-or-treat. We had some suggestions on how to make it better for next year. I think it will just continue to grow. Being the first year of a village-wide trick-or-treat, I think it will, it will get better. If you have any ideas, please let us know. You can call in here, let us know. You can email me, kelly.hoffe@millersburgohio.com, and give us your suggestions. Boo in the Burg was also a success. Thank you to Taylor and HDM for a great event. We were there. Their band was wonderful. It was really good. I would sit and listen to that band for three hours. It was good. I have the first council minutes book of Millersburg, Ohio. It is very old, and it is very, I, I'm afraid if we turned the pages, it would fall apart. If you are interested in looking at that, I wondered your thoughts on donating it to the Historical Society. It's all handwritten.
Be more likely to be preserved there than bouncing around in Nate's office. Is that?
I don't think I've ever seen it.
Oh, okay.
Karen.
Oh, okay.
Karen found it.
Okay.
I got it from her.
Should we look at scanning it or digitizing it?
They, they digitized the whole thing. They had totes digitize it so that if people want to look at it, you can go out to the Historical Society and, and look through it without touching the pages of the book.
Did you say what year that was from?
I think it was 1835 was the first one, and they spelled Millersburg with an H at the end. Yeah, and it's beautifully handwritten. It's beautiful. I just wondered your thoughts on that.
I'm better off there than it is here. Seems like a good location for it. Have you been in contact with?
Yeah, yeah. I haven't told them that I was thinking about asking you this.
What did they say?
They, they were, first of all, they were thrilled that it was found. They were, they took it down to totes, and they had a, it's almost as tall as that Millersburg Tree poster. They had a big poster made of the very first page, the first council meeting, and that was at our, our town, Millersburg Part One. But then they had the whole thing scanned so that people could look through it if they wanted to down at the Historical Society. I just thought that that was probably the safest and best place for it. I wondered, wondered what your thoughts were on that.
I'd agree.
Yeah. Devon?
Yeah.
Andrew? Bob? Okay. Alright, thank you for that. I think they'll be really excited about that. Ohio Magazine's Best Hometown Millersburg Edition is here. I think we're gonna frame one and put it here in council chambers. I think that'll be, that'll be nice, but those are for you to all keep. If anyone else would like one, we have them here. You can come and pick one up for free. I will give you one before you leave.
Okay.
Okay. Mary Millersburg is coming up November 23rd. I've talked about that. We're doing a downtown Mary Millersburg window contest. Taylor and I were talking because she had a business that is not located downtown, but wants to do a window. And so she is making a list of all the empty windows. So if there is a business in Millersburg that is not downtown but would like to do a downtown window, please contact Taylor Sigler at HDM, and she can get you put in a window location, and you can participate in our window contest. Does anybody else have anything, old business? No? New business?
We had trick-or-treats Saturday, and I had six neighbors contact me or see me. They didn't know anything about it. I say half of this community does not have the Facebook page. How can we get this information out there?
I think, I've been thinking about that because that's, one of the complaints that I had this year was people didn't know. I think we're going to have an article in the Bargain Hunter, everyone gets that, and I thought about sending out, I think I would like to do it like July, send out a little postcard of all the fall happenings, because there's so many things that happen here in the fall, and then everybody will have the dates and times. And then everybody will have the dates and times and just mail them out to everybody here in Millersburg. And then that way, we know everybody's getting one. And I would do that myself, that won't be a.
I gave a little bit of thought to it myself. Couldn't we, you know, in the Bargain Hunter, have Village Corner or something? That, you know, it's a public service that we're running weekly with the events that, that are happening or will happen.
That's a great idea.
Well, how, how does Sugar Creek put their meeting? Do they pay for that? Cause Sugar Creek will put in their village meetings in a hotel thing, so I wonder what that costs.
I don't know.
Have you seen it?
No, but I can.
It'd be a public service.
So like they'll always put, Sugar Creek always has something about what happens at their meetings and things coming up. And I don't know what that costs, but I, I, I follow it.
Is that, is that just an article?
It's, yeah, like village enters into one-year contracts for, and then it'll, it'll be a whole thing about Sugar Creek. They'll, Sugar Creek Village Council.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's in, and I read, and I, and I thought, well, it would be nice if we did. I noticed they'll talk about all kinds of things in there.
Well, I'll contact Walt and find out how they do that and what. I can do that.
Saint Andrea, is it written by a reporter? It's written by Bar Blenbacher from the Bargain Hunter, but, but they always have.
They always have something. And I do, I have noticed that they always have something in there.
And I thought, well, I wonder why, it'd be nice if Millersburg did.
Yeah.
Because they'll find out a lot.
Right.
They'll talk about the, the, yeah, it's a big art, it's about everything that they talk about their meetings. So that would be almost a way that when you discuss your community events.
That we could get it out there.
I, I see like, airway, west town school board meetings are usually in there in the Bargain Hunter. And so how they do it, you know, who knows?
Yeah. That's a good question. Okay, I'll talk to the Bargain Hunter too. I gotta write it down or I'll forget. No, yeah, that was one of the, one of the biggest complaints. Uh, the other thing that I, I did notice just from the people that were trick or treating, um, there were a lot of people with little kids in wagons and they got to the park and turned around and they were like, we're not going down the hill because we'll have to come back up the hill. So I thought if we had some designated park points around Millersburg so that people didn't feel like they had to walk all over town. You know, you can drive here, then trick or treat this area, go here, trick or treat this area. And I thought that that might help to get people more out into the different areas.
I think I still had around fifty kids.
Yeah, we had a hundred at our house.
Yeah, usually that's what I.
I had twenty-five, that's not bad for me.
Yeah.
So yeah, at, at Clark, I have a little tiny Clark over there, they, they have anybody that like lives out in the country that wants to bring candy. They can take it one or two places, they can take and dump off their candy somewhere. Or they can set up shop in front of their little community center down there. And then um, the, you know, people can kind of parade through there and, and you can hand out candy if you live, live out in the Boondocks. So that's something maybe up along the sidewalks or the courthouse or something like that.
There's some people, Kilbuck's bank parking lot, they had their trucks open and we're giving candy over to.
Mm-hmm. The other thing that I was thinking about was um, like on our street, you know, on South Clay Street, it's kind of flat and then you got the hill that goes down. And I thought about sending out a little note to all of my neighbors on Clay Street and saying, you know, if you want to do trick or treat, you know, we can all set up in my driveway and the neighbor's driveway or something so that, you know, the kids could just come there and get everybody from our street in that, that location.
Or even the park maybe.
The park, we could do the park, that would be good.
People could do that at the park.
That would be good because they were willing to go to the park.
Yeah.
But then they saw the hill and they were turning around and.
So that'd be a good place.
That would be a good place. And maybe we could do with the parks, you know?
Yeah.
Utilize our parks that way. So, yeah. Any, any ideas? We're open to all new, all new ideas. I think it'll get better each year, people just get used to it. Any other new business? I did want to tell you guys, I got a letter from United Way of Wayne and Holmes County. They have this program called WHIRE, W-H-I-R-E. Um, people can call their number, three three oh two six three six three six three. If they're struggling and need help, they can direct you to whatever program that you are eligible for. They'll ask you questions like, are you a veteran? And then they can get you involved in veteran programs or, you know, are you low income? They can get you involved and it's, they do utilities, they do food, they, they, any, any kind of problem, housing. Um, they have, they can help anybody, direct you to whatever will help with your specific need. So far this year, they have helped a hundred and forty-eight people in Holmes County with food, healthcare, housing, family support and utility assistance. Um, they also accept volunteers or donations to the service for the same number. So if people would want to help with that, they, they can, they would love to accept your help. So they help and they, they will take volunteers and donations. So I just wanted, thought that that was interesting, that they have helped a hundred and forty-eight families in our community. That's awesome.
Is that something we could get in our citizens handbook?
Yeah, we could. That's a good idea. All right, any other new business? Northeast Ohio hit us up last week, so we were the, that's where they are right now, they're, they're on our street. All right, any visitors wish to address council? No? Anything for executive session? All right, we have a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Pullman?
Hostetter?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Con?
Aye.
All right, thank you so much for coming, everyone. Have a great evening.